Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, March 7th, 2022. It's 6:30 PM. This is a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. Chair will open the Board of Selectmen meeting. Does the Chair of the Planning Board open theirs?
We have a full board of the Planning Board here tonight.
Excellent. Awesome. Okay, without ado, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item two is the consent agenda. Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Sigunovich. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, call that to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous, three zero. Mr. Joseph, Mr. Johnson are excused tonight. Let the record reflect. All right, item three, under New Business 3A, Fay Rolz is here, talking about our Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. Act one up, okay?
Mr. Chairman, Fay's going to come up and give us a brief public presentation.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hey.
How is everybody today? Kind of hot weather outside, yeah. It was spitting my whole ride here. I had to turn my windshield wipers on and off.
Oh, yeah, because it's at SharePoint. I'm already in.
Not the best way to go.
Wow.
That works.
So, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Fay Rolz. I'm an Assistant Transportation Planner with the Center Mass Regional Planning Commission, and my role is I focus on bicycle pedestrian planning for the region. And so today, I'm going to be presenting on the Airport Road Intersection in Pedestrian Improvement as a Shared Streets and Spaces Grant that was applied for on March 1st, but it's also a project that was listed as a priority for the Complete Streets Plan that was submitted and approved by Mass DOT in, I believe, May of 2021. And so this kind of just reflects the Complete Streets Plan and what we worked on in late 2020, early 2021, which shows an envisioned network connectivity that would connect the Nichols College, Shepherd Hill Regional School System, and then Mason Road School together, but also to the downtown to kind of create this box-like shape on Mason Road, Dudley Oxford Road, and Dudley Hill Road Airport Road onto West Main Street. And so as part of this project, as I mentioned, was a Complete Streets project that was identified as a priority area due to the high crash location, but people also tend to speed through the corridor, and there is very much needed pedestrian accommodations at this intersection, especially with the Nichols College being so close by and a lot of notable pedestrians that go down to West Main on this road. And so highlighted in red in the circle is actually the intersection that we're going to be talking about this evening. And so I do want to give some background before we get into the project about what the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant actually is. And so the grant was originally established in 2020 as a response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And so basically, Mass DOT implemented funding rounds that would help create outdoor spaces in different municipalities, as well as outdoor recreation spaces. So they did a lot of projects with trails, opening up outdoor dining options on main streets, but also putting in new bike lanes or pop-up projects for pedestrian areas. And so the original kind of program requirements that they had were under the bicycle pedestrian infrastructure, transit supportive infrastructure in main streets. But in 2022, for the newest grant round, they did open up a speed management portion, which would allow communities to really target intersections or parts of the roadway that are heavily affected by high volumes of traffic, but also people that make stop signs or speed limits on occasion, as well as equipment-only purchases up to $50,000, which I know the town's been interested in to maybe apply for some money to buy snow removal on the sidewalks, different machinery and that sort of thing. And so specifically for this project, because it's a quick build and low-cost project, they do ask that you kind of have it completed within a year. And so this project we're going to be talking about this evening should be completed by June of 2023, but hopefully before then. And so this is kind of the overview of what the project is. I'm just going to read it for you guys, just in case people aren't able to see it, which kind of gives the high-level overview of what the project is listed at currently and what you'll see if the town does get funded, the funds to do the project. So with the current configuration, motor vehicles have noted, have been noted, to speed through the intersection and ignore stop signs encouraged by wide curb radii, making the intersection both dangerous to motorized and non-motorized users alike. Temporary reconfiguration will support safe intersections, the safe intersection for all users, and allow the town to reallocate portions of the paved right-of-way for pedestrian access and green stormwater management solutions to mitigate known flooding hazards. Additionally, this project is listed in the town's Complete Streets prioritization as a priority for the community to develop safe and convenient walking routes for all ages and abilities, more notably to connect the Nichols College and Shepherd Hill Middle School and High School campuses to each other in downtown. And so these are some pictures. I admit I didn't drive out to the intersection, although every time I come to Dudley, I do have to go through the intersection. I'm from Brookfield. And so these are some pictures that I took from Google Street View just to kind of highlight some of that wide curb radio that I'm talking about, which is basically, for those of you that don't know, you know, if you're able to roll through the stop sign, it's usually an issue. And so that's kind of what we want to address here this evening. And so this is a picture that was provided by Jeff from the Highway Department, kind of a very rough sketched idea of what the intersection will look like with the new pedestrian intersection improvements. And so kind of the rounded portions that are, like, have the diagonal lines through them is that area that we want to take away from the road. So narrowing the lanes and the approaches to the intersection, both northbound and southbound on Dudley Hill Road. And so right now, that'll just be painted and have flex posts implemented there to secure that right-of-way for potential stormwater mitigation, particularly on the northbound extent of Dudley Hill Road near Nichols College. And so those types of solutions could include rain gardens and pedestrian infrastructure in the future, but right now, it really needs to be secured just to limit the traffic that goes through that area or at the speed that they currently go through. Additionally, for pedestrian improvements, we have about a quarter of a mile of sidewalk being implemented on the intersection down Tanyard Road up northbound of Dudley Hill Road and then eastbound on Airport Road. And this will extend eastbound on Airport Road all the way to the new 55-plus community development, which I believe is around 61 Airport Road, so it should end there. And so with that, there'll be four different new pedestrian crossings, all that are ADA compliant with the curb ramping and tactile warning panels for wheelchairs, high-visibility crossings with new signage. And to complement those, there will be recessing the stop lines at those crossings for vehicles to stop early on rather than where they're used to stopping currently. And then this is a rough timeline of when we're hoping to have this project completed by, by no means is this final, but we do hope that the town can develop and review an initial concept design, probably a little bit more sketched out than what we have currently, if possible, as the funding, once it's been funded. And then in May and June, they can kind of finish up that final design. And we're hoping that we can host a public forum or something similar to what we're doing tonight, just to highlight what the project really will look like and give any final comments. And then in July, we're hoping to acquire all the materials necessary for the project so that we're able to put out a public notice in August and then through August and September, have the project installed and people can use it as much as they'd like before the snow comes for the following winter. And as a part of this process, I meant to mention earlier, the speed management actually requires you to collect data prior to the project to see that there's a necessary, you know, proponent for mitigation of speeding or people ignoring stop signs and those sorts of things. And so once the project's been completed, a similar process has to be conducted to rate the level of success that the project has had on speeding or people ignoring those stop signs. And so actually, the Police Department in coordination with John next to me actually went out and was able to record speeds more recently in February, but also note if people were ignoring the stop signs. And surprisingly enough, a lot of people really did. They went right through the stop sign, or some people slowed down to maybe 10 miles an hour and just kept going. But more people than not did not stop than did stop. And so that's going to be a really, hopefully, big improvement for that intersection and have it be a lot safer for Nichols College students and just residents in the area. And so that kind of concludes my quick presentation for you all. I'm happy to take any questions or comments about the project. We really want to get some ideas for the people that live in the area, hopefully. Thank you.
Board members, any initial questions?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Excellent presentation. And in the beginning, when you did your narrative, you just did the acronym R O W, but then you said right-of-way. I think it's, people need to know we're not taking any land that the town doesn't already have taken by.
Yes.
So there's not going to be any taking of people's properties.
Correct.
It's all going to be in the, already in the right-of-way.
I have a question. It seems the sidewalks end after a certain distance. Is the plan to continue those pieces over time?
Yes, so if you can see this kind of picture here, all of the portions that are currently gray on that outer perimeter are actually all listed projects under the completes, I can't talk, Complete Streets prioritization plan, which have all been listed projects. And the community is actually able to apply for up to $400,000 for funding over a four-year rolling period. So as long as everyone keeps applying for projects either through, you know, more Shared Streets and Spaces Grants or Complete Streets Grants, it'll slowly build out. But this is really to kind of start the network at this kind of western end, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Fay. First of all, by virtue of my age, I think I have more familiarity with this intersection than anyone is here. A couple of things. I didn't find mention in your presentation of the parking lot. The parking lot right now is just this wide-open space. I have seen, on occasion, people exit from the parking lot without regard to any stop sign, and there is none posted in the parking lot. It's kind of a free flow, you know, go through the intersection, they'll take a right, they'll take a left, they're just about anything they want to do. I think we need some way of addressing that traffic flow. Additional to that is the fact that what is presently identified on the building as a golf course and restaurant is now, or about to be, or is transitioning into something called the Den, which will be effectively kind of an extension of the Nichols campus in terms of a bar, if you will. That changes the game significantly. And then if you're thinking in terms of golf, that's pretty much a daylight activity. And you're thinking in terms of restaurants, you probably have a demographic that's somewhat younger than those who will be frequenting the Den, if you will, the bar. Having people in and out of that building or trying to access it, assuming they came off from Tanyard Road. You can walk through the fields, but there are times of the year when you're going to get sucked into the mud and you won't get very far. But if you're coming up Tanyard Road into that intersection to access the bar, then leaving the bar, you've got a concern there in terms of increase, I think, increased pedestrian traffic late in the evening or late in the day when the folks who probably are inclined to avoid the stop sign at what is identified as a dangerous intersection. And if you wanted to check it, gentlemen, the signs are there. Dangerous intersection, more inclined to avoid or to disregard the stop sign. I really think there's additional work needs to be done. Lighting, one possibility. Driven the Nichols campus, and those of you that have on Center Road have noted how the campus has mitigated the pedestrian traffic issue in terms of those kind of elevated walkways, if you will. And as much as this is becoming something of an extension of the campus, I think that thought might be in order or something akin to that. Also a question, the sidewalk going down to the intersection from the 55 and over, again, speaking for probably my own demographic. We are inclined to be somewhat less mobile than the rest of the world, and I don't know what we'd be accessing going down there other than we were going to the Den, which again is marketed, according to the Webster Times, and what I had, I think the Yankee Express referred to it as a bar six times over in the article that was published there. I don't think you're going to get a lot of traffic out of that 55 and over community to the Den, if you will. You also mentioned flex posts. Gentlemen, I would ask that if you recall.
It goes to the golf course, Mr. Clark.
Please?
It goes to the golf course. 55 and older might want to go there, right?
People don't drive to the golf course. People don't walk on the golf course, never mind walk to the golf course, Mr. Morrissey.
I understand.
All right. I would add, Mr. Solomon, if I could tell you.
I didn't want us to make it about the bar.
No, no, well, it, no, seriously, I think that is an issue. That is a concern. I mean, that really has to be a concern here. And we don't, you know, the game has changed significantly. It's not just the bar, but it's the hours of operation. Because the restaurant and the golf course, there are limited hours of operation where those are probably going to be busy. The bar is extending, likely extending into a midnight hour or something later than that, so the game is definitely different. The other thing that you mentioned was flex posts, those yellow things. I would refer the board to the bridge over the Kunabog River going towards South Bridge. There are a total, gentlemen, of five of those that remain. Several of them are on the side of the road. Dudley does not love flex posts from the mortality rate that you would see of the posts that were in place. I mean, it's just gaps. I don't know whether it was plows, a weather event, or just bad driving, but they didn't last, and I don't know that they're going to make it much longer here.
So.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just in response to that, the flex posts are a temporary measure that would be used as a test run for the layout, or the proposed layout for what would be the ultimate resolve there. And I think we're talking about two different things here where, you know, you people all sit on the Planning Board. You have the ability to impose different requirements if there's going to be a change in use or an accessory use with a piece of property. So the things that you talk about with closing an entranceway to a parking lot or making some changes, we're talking about implementing a sidewalk project through a grant program and make positive improvements to the roadway and the intersection to make it safer. If there's other things that need to be augmented over there for a future use, then I think those things fall into your purview.
I appreciate your thoughts, but I would suggest that it's a package. Now, you start pulling one string and the rest of it comes apart.
If I could add, thank you very much, Chairman. So to answer a couple of those questions, a lot came up, so I'm going to try to hit as many as I can. I think in part of the conversation, there needs to kind of be coordination, potentially with Nichols College, especially lighting is extremely expensive, and I'm sure Jeff knows a quite deal about that. And so this grant program has a limit of $200,000 because it is a small grant program. And so that really doesn't cover a lot in the grand scheme of things. So lighting is somewhat out of the option just because of the cost of it. So if, I mean, I don't know about how sufficiently lit the intersection is, but I definitely think that there could be a conversation with Nichols if they're going to be, you know, you can say this corridor will benefit Nichols College residents going to the golf club and maybe in the evening hours for some recreational, whatever they want to do. And so there could be, like I said, some coordination there. In terms of the opening to the entrance to the golf course, I think implementing sidewalks and what we've had proposed will actually narrow that area, but also granite curbing will be implemented there as well. And so if a car's going to speed out of there, they're probably going to bottom out unless they go through the correct way.
Can you bring that previous slide up you had with the picture? Because I thought I could see sidewalk in front of that parking lot that we're talking about. What is that narrow area right there, right below the 307.9?
It is drawn as sidewalk, but like I said, it's just a very rough sketch of kind of the layout of the sidewalk.
So I mean, if you've got granite, if that is going to be a sidewalk there and you put granite curbing in and you just leave an opening for people to enter and exit the parking lot, I think that would mitigate a lot of what Mr. Clark was talking about, which I agree with as far as when people leave that parking lot to exit onto that intersection, they pick wherever they want to come.
Yeah, they're wondering which way they're going. You're right.
If I may, I think it would be appropriate to have some sort of signage, no right turn, no left turn, and something to direct that traffic so that it just doesn't find its way out into the middle of the intersection, which even with the sidewalk there and the curbing is still likely.
Just to go back to Mr. Clark's comments and then you interjected. In the presentation, they stated that the first phase of sidewalk would end at the 55. And I, believe me, I sympathize, I relate to what Mr. Clark said about mobility, but there may be a chance for those people to walk to the golf course, walk to the Bison's Den. And I was going to say, but we got beat by the presentation. Nichols has been very, very cooperative on a lot of our asks. And I'm sure if we bring a representative in, we can come to some sort of conclusion with Jeff, Town Administrator, emergency people to do something to that parking lot. Maybe they can make it almost like a horseshoe, in one way, out the other, you know, to mitigate traffic flow. But I wanted to ask, to put the police chief on the spot for a moment. The restaurant at the golf course, up until a few years, well, a few years back, they were open as a restaurant after hours. And I don't recall an enormous uptick in accidents or ambulance calls in that intersection. So it was open late, and I understand demographics, probably going to be 20-something crowd, 21 and over, obviously, because they have to be of age. And once again, I haven't seen a presentation from Nichols. Is it going to be a pub, like a pub to 10 o'clock, close the kitchen, and then stay open till midnight or 1 o'clock? I mean, I think we can get some more information from Nichols, which would mitigate a lot of concern and maybe bring everybody to a come-to-Jesus moment, get us all on the same page.
While we're, just one thought, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Solomon said. I think Nichols has done a very good job in terms of the traffic situation on Center Road. And I'm hoping that possibly some of that goodness, if you will, can move down Tanyard Road into this intersection.
Right. That's what we're trying to do. Chief?
Thank you. I don't recall too much increase or uptick in activity when that was, when that was a restaurant at that point. So again, I think they'd be certainly willing to have whatever discussions and whatever the body decides on as some recommendations. I'm sure they would be willing to sit down and discuss making some changes, especially in coordination with everything.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, just as a concluding thought, I don't want anyone to think I'm opposed to this. I think it's a great idea. I think it's 40 years overdue, quite frankly. I would say, however, I think you're going to find, if you look at the restaurant and entertainment businesses, a different demographic in terms of your restaurant versus your bar trade, if you will. People go to a bar, not necessarily to eat, but probably more inclined to something of a liquid nature. And obviously, we know, I think in the state, it's .08 in terms of blood alcohol level. We will have people coming from that bar, maybe not as frequently as we'd like. I mean, not frequently, hopefully, but with that level somewhere in the line. And we may have pedestrians exiting that building, going back to the campus with a similar blood alcohol level. I don't know what that combination is, but it doesn't sound like anything that mixes well.
Mr. Chair, I think, again, Mr. Clark echoed, I think Nichols have been very responsive. And again, we can refer to fire and EMS. They run their own alcohol functions up there. And I would, you know, wonder how many calls, like, when Nichols runs a function that has alcohol, they do a pretty good job regulating consuming. I mean, I can't, I don't think you guys get called up there to break up a lot of problems when they run their own function.
They usually can, we usually have a fire detail too along with the police for up there, but also the times we do go up there are the times that they're.
Coming from somewhere else.
Party-ing in their dorm room when they're not supposed to be. That's why the calls, not during the organized events.
Right, and they run their facility, like I said, I'd really like to hear them come in and tell us, are we running more of a restaurant-type mentality?
Yeah, I'd like to know that. And then we treat them like every other establishment that does that in town, right?
And to be honest, Nichols, Nichols goes above and beyond our bylaws. Our bylaws do not require tip-certified bartenders, but most establishments require to be on the insurance for the bar. And Nichols, all their people are usually third-party vendors that are tip-certified.
Excuse me, Mr. Solomon, but I think you're talking about one-day events.
Right, but I'm saying.
Right, and this is not, I don't think this thing is going to be open one day a month or one day a year. This is going to be an ongoing business, probably looking to be open six or six or more days a year, a week, rather.
I'm saying, based on their history, though, they.
I understand. The history is good, and let's hope the history is not all in the past and we can bring some of that to the future.
I mean, I think they're very risk averse as a whole, and they probably would have thought about this quite a bit. We have to assume positive intent that they know what they're doing there. So, I mean, I want to, all right, Dean and then Kerry.
I believe, don't call me on this, but I believe their hours are going to be something like Thursday through Sunday. They're going to be open four days, and they are serving food as well.
Okay.
Are they, are they going to be four days? That's an all-the-time schedule?
I believe so.
Okay, that's good to know.
I believe so. Don't call me, but I remember hearing that when I asked the President about it, but the conversation was quite a while ago, so I'd have to verify that.
Well, my point is, I was going to say, back when I went there, it was only open once or twice a month, but it sounds like this will be a little more often, so never mind.
Okay. Dan, Guy, Tom, Steve, anything else to add from Planning Board?
I'd like to know if there's anybody here from the public. I'd like to hear some.
Yeah, well, yeah, that was what I was going next.
Let's get to that.
Okay, we're going to give you guys the opportunity. Anybody in the public have something they'd like to comment on this project?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Fay.
Yeah, Fay, fantastic.
If it looks like we've reached the end.
Fantastic. Yeah, that's good. I mean, like, from our standpoint, you know, anything that we can do to improve public safety, you know, while looking at all the other concerns is a good thing, right?
Right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask that we have the Town Administrator, police and fire through their contacts, reach out to Nichols, invite them in, or send them the presentation Fay just gave us, but have somebody come in and give us a little bit of background on what they intend to run out of there. You know, like I said, they're looking more towards a pub, close early, late-night closes. And the good thing is it's 21 and over, so you're talking usually second semester juniors.
A lot of them, yeah, that actually live there, a lot of them don't.
Right.
Yeah.
And they've been very responsive. I'm sure if the chief said to them, you know, we want to have a detail there, so I'm sure we can come to a good conclusion. I'd like to get them in. I think Mr. Clark's brought up some good points.
I agree.
Let's figure out what they're going to do, and then we can make sure it conforms to what we want.
So you guys.
I should have had some initial discussions to kind of get to that. That's in process.
Awesome. Good? Awesome. Good? Any other questions on Airport Road? All right, seeing none, we'll go to 3B, Mason Road.
Thanks, very much.
Thank you, Fay.
I'm going to stick around to listen to you.
Yes, please, and thank you. This is a sidewalk discussion related to the Complete Streets project. Mr. Bruto. He'll kick us off.
Mr. Chairman, this is the Complete Streets grant-funded program that we've been talking about turning around over the past three or four months. We wanted to have a public discussion as to what's being planned for that construct. It's already on here.
I got the actual PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, it's on there.
What is on there is actually a PDF of the PowerPoint.
Yeah, that's just the PDF. Let me grab the.
Oh, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, this project is pretty much 99.9% in the town layout, but there is some access issues to driveways that we wanted to discuss. There was going to be some discussion about trees and bushes that might be actually in a town layout but considered in someone's yard potentially. So we want to talk about the timeline of the project, the scope of the project, and what we're prepared to do to make sure it goes smoothly.
Great. Thank you. All right.
Is it coming up?
No, we'll just use the PDF. All right.
I just made a phone call. Right now, the Bison's Den is only open for special events, but they're trying to get it open for Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
But that hasn't happened yet.
Okay, all right, that gives us something to go on. I'd still like to have them come in.
I just want to like.
Yeah, no, thanks, no, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for the opportunity to share tonight. I'm going to go through some slides that I've prepared. And again, this is in relation to the Mason Road sidewalk installation between Meadow Lane and the fire station. It is a proposed sidewalk for proved access to Mason Road Elementary School. And Fay mentioned the Complete Streets program, and we're going to talk a little bit about that. And then I will go through a description of the project, kind of walk through block by block to kind of show what the sidewalk placement will look like. We'll touch briefly upon the next steps, and then we'll entertain questions and answers. So according to the Mass dot website, Complete Streets portal, a complete street is one that provides safe and accessible options for all travel modes, walking, biking, transit, and vehicles for people of all ages and abilities. And as such, Dudley has signed on to the Complete Streets program. And just quick summary, tier one of the Complete Streets program is where the town develops a Complete Streets policy. The town has done that, submitted it to MassDOT, MassDOT has approved that policy. Uh, tier two is the town submitting a project prioritization plan. Fay mentioned that the Airport Road intersection was one of the projects prioritized on that plan. Uh, what we're going to talk about tonight are projects two and three on that plan. Uh, the sidewalks that we'll talk about were broken out into two projects between West Main Street and Delaney, and then Delaney up to Meadow. So Dudley is, is well into the Complete Streets program. Uh, back in the fall, they applied for one of those four hundred thousand dollar construction grants for these projects, and they were granted, uh, that, that amount of funding in order to construct sidewalks on Mason Road to prove access to the Mason Elementary School and other destinations. So just to give you an idea where the project is, Meadow Lane is up here at the top of the graphic, and West Main Street is down here. You'll see the F indicating the fire station. And this black dot represents the elementary school. And there's a shared-use path right now that runs between the fire station and the school. And then there's no sidewalk the length of Mason Road. So we'll talk a little bit about, uh, the proposal. We're going to widen, the proposal is to widen that shared-use path between the fire station and the school. And then install sidewalk from the school north to Meadow Lane. All right, so Meadow Lane to Lakeside Drive. Guess you can't see it all that well, but I've highlighted what represents the layout line for the town's street. That's the, the border between the street layout and, and obviously, the residential properties that, about the project. But generally, uh, what we are looking at is holding the west side of the road, offsetting twenty-six feet to allow for two lanes and a minimal shoulder, and then constructing a five-foot sidewalk. And, um, in this section between Meadow Lane and Lakeside Drive, you can see the, uh, the revised curb line, which ultimately does follow, for the most part, the existing edge of road. You've got the back of sidewalk, and then this heavy dash line behind the sidewalk is ultimately what we call a slope limit. That's where we have to, um, slope to meet existing, because if you put in your one and a half percent ADA compliant sidewalk, oftentimes along Mason Road, we're cutting into a, a slope. So we've got to cut into the slope, you've got to slope back up to meet the existing road, uh, property elevation. Uh, so the sidewalk here is entirely on town layout. Uh, some of the slope, particularly at, uh, at this driveway, does enter private property, as well as across this corner just a little bit, but ultimately, most of the work is within the town layout. From Lakeside Drive to Catherine Street. Uh, again, you can see the yellow, or at least I hope that you can see the yellow line. You've got the, uh, the sidewalk.
Can you zoom in at all?
Actually, I can do that in this program, can I?
Oh, much better.
Hey, there you go. Does that work all right?
Yeah.
All right. So you've got the yellow layout line for the street, you've got the proposed sidewalk, you see the curb line, you see the back of walk, you see our slope limit. Slope does encroach on private property in a couple of spots. There's, uh, a tree here, next to this driveway, and a tree here next to this driveway that are on public property, that will need to be removed in order to construct that sidewalk. And, uh, uh, walkway will be repaired, it'll be saw cut and connected, and driveways that are impacted will be saw cut and graded back to meet the existing sidewalks. Uh, Catherine Street to Oakwood. Again, you can see that all the sidewalk is on town layout, most of the, uh, grading even is within the town layout. Uh, this driveway is impacted, it's a pretty good slope, so there will be some transition that needs to be accomplished in order to go back to meet the existing grade of the driveway. And, uh, then beyond that, the, uh, even the slope is within town layout. From Oakwood Avenue to Delaney. Forgive the split, these two showed up on, uh, separate sheets, so I cut and paste it in, they, uh, they did break that way. This one, the back of sidewalk, pretty much follows the, uh, the town layout line for the street. So the slope limits, the grading are going to occur on private property. There are two trees here at this property that will likely need to be removed. Uh, the roots will be impacted in such a way that the tree would not survive otherwise. So those two trees will be removed, and then slope along the project over to Delaney Ave. Uh, these trees will be protected. The sidewalk will be widened just a little bit to get around a guy wire that's here in the sidewalk to allow for a minimum ADA passage, uh, for the pedestrian walkway through there. Delaney Avenue to the school driveway. Again, the, uh, the sidewalk is well within the town layout, the slope limits it within the town layout, there's a little bit of encroachment potentially with the grading on, uh, private property here. And this brings us to the school driveway. An ADA compliant pedestrian ramp will be installed, and a crosswalk will be installed across the, uh, across the school driveway. I, uh, forgot to mention that the pedestrian curb ramps will be installed at each of the side streets as well.
Yeah, just, uh, wanted to point out too that all of the, uh, sidewalk, as they pass through the, the individual driveways, would remain as concrete, correct?
That is correct, yep.
And then the driveways would meet the back of the, the concrete wall.
Yeah, so like here, we're proposing a cement, cement concrete driveway, the length of Mason Road, uh, cement concrete sidewalk, I'm sorry. And at the driveways, we will have cement concrete sidewalk at driveways, as it's technically called. And then from the back of the sidewalk to where we meet existing would be replaced with home-ex asphalt. From that driveway in front of the school, across the front yard, uh, you've got the, uh, the proposed sidewalk, we're going to set it back from the curb line, so instead of installing a vertical granite curb, uh, that will remain as berm, there'll be a five-foot grass strip, and then the sidewalk, uh, across the length of the front yard of the school. That'll take us over to the other driveway, toward the end of the shared-use path that cuts through the woods. And again, pedestrian curb ramps, crosswalk, and, uh, a connection from that sidewalk to the sidewalk on the school property and to the shared-use path. And then from the school driveway through, you can see that right now, there's a, a six-foot approximately patuminous walk. And we're proposing to widen that to a ten-foot multi-use path, so that it can, you know, it can accommodate two-way pedestrian or cycle traffic. And then down toward the fire station, same thing, we'll tie in at the end of the existing walkway at the parking lot. Uh, next steps, a request for determination of applicability will be filed with the Conservation Commission, so they can look at, uh, any impacts, that may be caused by construction of the path behind the fire station within wetland buffer. Uh, project will be advertised in the spring, and then construction will begin. This is one school that's out, if not sooner, but the ideal would be to get it done as soon as possible. So, not likely to wait until school gets out. And the road will be repaved after the sidewalk completion, and, uh, everything will be all buttoned up before school comes back in the fall. Any questions?
Just on the timeline, it's pretty aggressive, we'll be able to have that job bid out, if the construction started in late spring, early summer?
Yeah, we've got a, uh, we've got a solid set of plans already, and, uh, spec book is, is put together in draft, so it's just a matter of, um, you know, getting final review comments from the town, getting that buttoned up and put out to bid.
Thank you.
No, not yet.
Okay, Guy?
The section from the fire station up to the school where it's currently asphalt, would that stay asphalt, just being wider?
That would be asphalt, yes.
Okay.
Yep, that part would remain asphalt. This is a, a picture of that, in case you hadn't recognized it.
Yep. Okay, Ms. Clark?
A question regarding the five-foot dimension, is that ADA compliant, is that what's driving that, the five-foot sidewalk?
Five foot. It's a desirable minimum? Yeah.
And as far as cutting into private property, and you, you mentioned there's some slope issue there, uh, how is that going to be addressed? Is that going to be, you know, are you going to plant grass there, are you going to try to restore that to, uh, its prior appearance, at least as much as possible?
They'll be restored in kind, um, if it was grass, the loman seed contract will be required to, uh, you know, get that to grow. You know, you can't just loman seed it, walk away and
I would hope not.
Not, allow it not to grow, not to ensure that it doesn't grow.
Any utilities that have to be relocated as a result of this?
The only thing that may, um, we've got some, the, the new water mains were installed, the only thing that we're looking at right now is some of the service boxes may have to be adjusted to meet new elevation, whether it be at the sidewalk or their placement immediately behind the sidewalk.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a point of information, I came across an article published in the Webster Times back in March of nineteen sixty-nine. And apparently, before town meeting, which was in February of that year, and they had an attendance of a hundred and fifty people, which is a pretty good number.
Very good.
Four percent of the electorate at that point, at that time. Uh, this was on the, this was a part of the warrant, it was passed over. But the price associated with that is somewhere between twelve and thirteen thousand dollars.
Wow.
So fifty-something years ago, if we had done it then, I think Mr. Johnson asked somewhere in the past, you know, why now? If not now, when? I mean, it's going to be millions of dollars in future. Also, for the chief's benefit, at that, uh, town meeting, the police got a fifteen percent raise. But the chief only got, chief only got up to nine thousand, which is
I was reintroduced that.
No, no, the, the chief's salary was only a little in excess of nine, and I think the patrolman was seven, so unless you want to reintroduce that, it's not that over again, we'll just let that pass.
That's okay.
That was nine figures.
Jeff, did you have something? Throw something back. Steve?
The shared-use path, uh, shared-use, just bicycles and pedestrian?
Non-motoredized vehicles, yeah.
Okay. How wide is that?
Stroller skates, you know, those things, yeah.
How wide is that?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, so is there going to be something at the edge of where the fire department's parking lot is, and that starts, that's going to stop some yahoo from driving down it?
I think there may be ballards there today, if not, we could certainly put ballards there, we could propose ballards.
There currently aren't, but, uh, certainly on the, similar like what we have on the rail trails.
Rocks, yeah.
There's removable, removable ballads.
It's not that wide right now, but it's going to be ten feet wide and paved. He just, I just asked him.
Well, I, I actually think the, the profile really isn't going to change from what it is right now, other than it'll be paved. Right now, uh, we actually maintain that, apply that in the winter time with a, with a full-size loader. So it is possible to get down there, we, you know, if there was some concern with that, again, we have removable ballads that are in, uh, the pathways that go into the rail trails to prevent motorized vehicles from, could do the same thing there.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, just one thought in terms of the, the residents, uh, there is town bylaw that requires sidewalks be cleared. Uh, we, obviously, we're in that time of year when this is an issue. Unfortunately, when plows go through, the snow that will be deposited on the sidewalk is not your fresh Norman Rockwell scene, it's that stuff that's mixed with brine, sand, and whatever else happens to be in the roadway. It can be very difficult and very heavy to move. Uh, I don't know that the bylaw has stipulated any fine that applies for that, but I would hope that the town would be very cautious in enforcement. This is something that, if, even if it were available to citizens or residents only eight months or nine months of the year, it's still a heck of a better thing than we have now.
That's actually one of the questions I had, like, what, what is the snow requirement?
So I, I think Fay had mentioned in her presentation that as part of, uh, the improvements that the town would be, uh, intend to be making, we're also pursuing grants for, uh, snow removal equipment for the sidewalks. So, uh, you know, we understand that as they're added to, and, um, you know, if we, we're installing these types of sidewalks, particularly in, in the area of schools, we'd probably want to have snow removal equipment for the sidewalks.
I, I think the residents will feel a little better when we take the probably out of that.
Yeah, no, I, I, I had the same, that's, that's good to know, Jeff, thank you. Tom, anything?
Nope.
Guy, anything else? Dan?
You know, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan?
Again, I hate to put the police chief on the spot, but this was my section for a long time, the sidewalks, and in the past, there was, there were some that were never shoveled, and some that was always shoveled, and I know for a fact that the chief would have his guys go up, literally go up to a door and say, listen, we know, understand a little snow's a little snow, but you got to keep it open for everybody, so, chief.
Yeah, it's only the second time you put, put me on the spot tonight, so we're at this
With that nine, nine thousand dollar raise or whatever.
That's it, yeah, well, I like his fifteen percent proposal, that's perfect. Um, we, we, this is obviously one of those situations that we try to work with the people to do, because I believe the fine could be twenty dollars a day if it, if it's really enforced like that, so. Uh, but it's something that we, we really don't want to get into that, that situation. We have, uh, worked in the past with the National Honor Society up at Shepherd Hill, so I think that's, that's a program that continues, so if folks are elderly or disabled and can't get out and do it, uh, the students come out and do it for free. And then, uh, so, you know, we try to work with the people to get that done, and we realize it is one of those, it is one of those challenging issues. So Jeff and I have had, uh, many discussions about, uh, the, the best thing to do is probably get some equipment that some of the communities use. That way you can take care of them all in one shot, and, uh, it makes it easy for all the people out of there and opens up everything safely, so. Uh, so again, we, it is a, it is a bylaw, it's on the books, but we try to be as, as generous as possible with, uh, allowing people to get that done in some way, shape, or form.
Right, to Mr. Clark's other point, there's, there's only one driveway between Meadow and Lakeside, and that lady's not approximate, I know she's a hundred. So I'm sure she has someone help maintain her property, but it's a perfect example, you know, we have snow and they can't get it cleared in the first twenty-four hours, we don't want to volunteer and swing the big hammer.
Dan, excuse me, Dan, are there any trees that are going to be impacted by this project?
Yes, there are two that will need to be removed within the public right-of-way, and two that will be removed, uh, for private property.
Do the residents that would be impacted, do they know, they're aware of this already, I hope?
I'm trying to find out one of them. I'm the driveway that he
Okay, yeah, I'm going to call on you next, Alan. Okay, yeah, come on, go up, let's, let's take, let's take public comment now.
Excuse me.
Thanks, Alan.
I'm on the corner of Oakwood and Mason Road, uh, I just, I had
South corner or north corner?
The north, the, um, the north corner. Uh, I got three questions. First one is, I've got a tree that if they do widen, if they do put the sidewalk in there, I'm afraid it's going to get into the roots. It's on the north, uh, the north end of my property. It's an oak tree. When you cut back, I'm afraid it's going to get into the roots. If you don't take that tree, am I going to be responsible for it if it, it deadens out, and then I start losing branches, or it falls on my house, or whatever?
I'm sorry, it's not refreshing, get right to you. I killed it, there we go.
Technology, wonderful.
So you've got a, uh, an existing tree, you're concerned about root impact with the construction of the sidewalks?
Right.
And have a question as to liability if it does
Right, I, I, I don't know if it's, it's being considered to be taken out, or if it's, if it's going to stay. If it does stay, I know when they start digging back, it's going to get into the root system of the tree, and it's up on, it, that's where we have that grade.
He's, he's the house thirty-two.
Yes, it's right around here somewhere, it's in this corner?
Yep, yep.
Okay, we don't show that, that may be because we didn't intend to impact it? If there is concern about root impact, is it something you would prefer to see removed, or?
I'd rather see it removed, because I don't want to be liable for it later down the road.
Yeah.
You know, five, ten years down the road, or whatever. Um, second, second was the, uh, how, how are you going to fix, now, my driveway looks like it's pretty well impacted. Um, is that going to be, I mean, that's all tarred and everything else, is that, that's going to be asphalted?
Yes, yep, so there'll be a saw cut right about where that slope limit is shown, and that'll be repaved and, and graded to
Now, when they did When they did the, when they did the project, the Waterline project, they got to my corner, and lo and behold, it always happens to me, they found out they had all kinds of ledge. Now, is that going to impact what you're doing as far as the sidewalks?
If we run into ledge, we'll have to remove that to get the sidewalk in there. So it will, but...
They had, they had a rough, they had a really rough time with, with my corner, Oakwood and, Oakwood and Mason. The last thing I was going to ask is, nobody said anything about the hydrants that they just put in. Where are those going? Are they going back on the property? They going to be backed up? Are they going to be brought street-side?
We updated the drawings for the water, the waterman that has built, just in the past week, so I apologize that it doesn't show up here, but there are two hydrants, and it doesn't look like we're going to have to relocate those, so they should be able to stay right where they are.
Because I know they got one down at Delaney that was put in. They, they removed the one that was across the street from me, they put it on my side of the street now. And it's, it's in the embankment, and again, it's really graded there, I get, and on the sidewalk itself, where they go into the grade, okay, they're going to leave the sidewalk flat, well, how do they fix the grading there?
Yeah, so they'll go into the grade, and, you know, rather than leave it vertical, they'll put in like a two-to-one or a three-to-one slope, as far back as they need to to meet the existing grade, and that's what these slope limits represent.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Alan. Anybody else want to come up and talk? Ms. Zakowski?
Mr. Chairman, is, is there a, Zakowski's coming up? We, we spoke, we had another, our final meeting before this meeting on Friday, and had George weigh in. George is the water superintendent, he's going to be on-site for any water or sewer infrastructure that's impacted, to make sure that it meets that department's specifications.
Good, that's good to know. Okay, thanks.
The question hasn't been asked, and it hasn't been addressed, so I'll put it right out there in plain English. Will Mason Road in this stretch be narrowed by even an inch in any place along the stretch?
Yes, there are a couple of spots where it does narrow.
By how much?
I'm going to say up to a foot.
That's going to make that, that's already tight on those, on those bends. You put school buses, you put trucks heading up to Mason, up to the middle school and high school, or anywhere else up in that area, that's making that stretch of road too narrow as far as, as I can, as far as I'm concerned.
This is probably the worst of it right here, you can see the existing...
And where is that, that's between?
Catherine to Oakwood.
Okay, I, I come off of Catherine, I live on Catherine Street.
Correct me if I'm wrong, too, Dan, but it, this somewhat tends to realign the street somewhat?
It does, it creates a uniform section, so I mean, probably eighty-five, ninety percent of it's going to remain its existing width.
Right now, right now Mason Road is not a uniform width or, or direction. So this will, this will bring it to a more uniform layout. It will probably actually help to make it safer, because we're going to have sidewalks now, and, you know, with, with signage and controls will help to control the speed on the, on the road, so. The speed limit over there right now is twenty-five miles an hour, I don't think anybody travels at that speed, but...
Down on the lower end, they tend to slow down, but up top, yeah, absolutely, they go too fast.
So there's a school directly there, you know, there's, there's a difference between the, the traffic controls and, and enforcement, so, you know, I know the, I know the police have been over there doing some patrols recently.
I know coming out of Catherine Street, that little cottage on the corner, they're going to be impacted quite a bit, but this is, a sidewalk there will improve the sightline. You cannot see up Mason Road until you're in the road from Catherine, looking towards Jesse.
Yeah, on this block, you can see that like this half of the block is going to be widened out from this lighter gray line to this double dark line that represents the curb, but this half of it will pretty much follow the existing width, and that's what most of the project does, is follow the existing width.
Okay. Okay, and then I just have some questions as a, as a water sewer commissioner.
Okay, go ahead.
Our current project, I'm starting to get questions from folks about when it's going to get paved. Up until this project came up, we were, we're telling them May, April, May, June timeframe. Now we're talking about August, September timeframe. In the meantime, the current contractor is responsible for road repairs, and with the delay, there is an escalator built into the contract for the cost of pavement. With the way things are, are inflating, the difference between the cost of pavement in April, May time period, and the difference in, in September ti, August, September time period could be significant. Who's going to bear that cost?
It's going to be a wide, widespread problem with most construction projects, yeah.
I think you'd realize that since last year, and now, without this project happening, that there's a substantial increase.
Oh, I, I understand that, and we're going to, we're going to bear the cost of that, but any more delay beyond the April, May time period, we're now getting into being delayed by something other than what would be otherwise expected.
Ma'am, come on up.
I'd like to know how wide the sidewalk is between the fire station and the school currently.
Six feet.
They're going to add two feet on either side of it?
It could be two feet either side, or four feet toward the street.
I see.
It's kind of ideal, yeah.
I'm assuming there'll be no trees taken down?
No, there won't need to be trees removed there.
Thank you.
That's good, thank you. Anybody else want to come up, speak?
I'm on the corner of Mason and Catherine. One of my big concerns is the plowing, because I know it gets plowed right into my yard, and, yeah, yeah, I'm across from the car. So it gets plowed right into my yard, so I'm concerned with, I won't be able, myself or my husband or my children won't be able to shovel the heavy snow that the plows would put there, and I know the police department will work with me, which is fantastic. My other thing is signage was mentioned, and that entire road is twenty-five, and they fly. Has any talk been, has there been any talk about putting up more signs? I know going from West Main to heading down that way, there's like one right near the, near the school, and I think that's about it, and there might be three coming in the opposite direction. And when I've told people, you know, the speed limit is twenty-five, and they're like, really? I'm like, yeah. I think this is a great idea, a lot of the Shepherd Hill cross-country kids run on that road, a lot of kids walk on that road. I know myself and my neighbors, we walk our dogs on that road, and I think it's a great idea. I'm just, just a couple of concerns.
I'm glad you came to talk about them. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, on the issue of signage, it's a work with the police chief and the highway superintendent, come up with something. I didn't email you.
Yeah, part of the project, there will, there will be some additional signage that goes in as part of the project.
Right, and it's our road, not a state road, so we'll have more control over that, some you can't.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I think we put entirely too much trust or faith in signs. Again, the airport-road intersection is identified by several signs as a dangerous intersection. I don't think that slowed anybody down in the last forty years. The sign is, in some cases, the signs are rusting and fading. We need significant update on the signs, put some sort of lighting around them, move them, you know, just change of pace, so it's not where they, typically ignoring them, but it's someplace else that they have to ignore them. Signs are only good for those people that want to take the, you know, the, the time to read and pay attention. And there are an awful lot of people in this town who seem to be in a heck of a hurry to get somewhere, and I guess that's not in their schedule. I think the only effective way you're going to slow people down is blue lights, and maybe the chief's fifteen percent is warranted.
Point.
Can I just say, living on Mason Road, I would like signage. The police do a fantastic job, and my kids and I stand in the kitchen and cheer them on when they pull people over, because they do drive so fast. I understand there are signs at the airport road, we barely have any on Mason Road, so even adding two more would definitely help. At least some people be like, oh, yeah, I'm past the school, it might still be twenty-five, but there's no signage to say that. So they're just going to assume that it's up to thirty-five in a residential area.
Great suggestion. Chief, I have a feeling you might want to say something about that.
No, just one, just one, one point, if you, if you look at it, similar to what happened up on Alton Drive, when they did the additional painting and to put the fog lines in and, and the center lines, I think something like this project standardized things, line it properly, put the proper pavement markings in there, should have that impact of slowing a lot of the traffic down, because just the visual of people seeing it as a smaller lane, not as, not as wide open, not, not as much free space, it has a tendency at times to have people slow down a little bit there, so we hope that that would take, take part of it. But, yeah, whatever is, whatever is the best thing to do as far as signage or any other type of activity, we'd be glad to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other discussion on Mason Road sidewalks? Okay, thanks, Dan. Great presentation, thanks for all the commentary.
Thank you for your patience with the technology.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, let's move on to three C, Senior Work Off Program, we're going to have a little discussion about this. Mr. Ruta, to kick us off.
Mr. Chairman, I think that you received a letter a little while back.
I did.
Asking the board to take another look at this, and he naturally dumped it on me. And then I dumped it on Michelle, and she was able to research that, apparently at some point this had been voted the Senior Work Off Program, and I think she included some of the paperwork in the packets with the...
Oh, I see it.
We talked about that, I think, Mr. Ruin, Mr. Massey, I believe it originally, I mean, I didn't see the packet, I believe it originally originated through the assessor's office, right? Supposed to do some work with the assessor's office, filing, paperwork. No access, like confidential information, and it was capped at seven fifty, I believe, is that the right?
It wasn't the one I read about in Charlton.
I think, I didn't see that in the, in the pack, and I thought it was captive like seven fifty.
There is a cap on it, Mr. ...
Yeah.
Board members' comments?
I think it's a great program to, to expand, I mean, I'm not sure how much participation we've had up to this point, but people may not have known about it. But I think it's a, a good program to look into and expand if necessary, as people have talked tonight, and we all know, every penny counts now going forward even more than ever.
Mr. Segener?
I think Mr. Sullivan hit the nail on the head. I, I, who knew about this beforehand? Nobody. I, I think we need to, I think we need to figure out how, like, are we going to put a cap on this, meaning if we, if we have a thousand people do this, I mean, but, but is that okay? Do we need a thou, do we want a thousand, do we want five hundred, fifty, ten? I think we need to figure out what we, how, how big we're going to do this, and I think we need to let people know about it, get them on board. I mean, there, there are a lot of people in Dudley with a lot of different skills that I'm sure they'll save some on their property tax bill. We'll get some skilled people. It's a win-win for everybody. It's just a matter of, at what scale do we want to do this, but we need to get the word out.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way, way it worked in Charlton was, there was a certain number of slots that were available to it, and people actually have to apply, they have to be over the age of sixty, own, own a home, pay property tax, and and, you know, so be eligible to actually, you know, work off said property tax. So right now, the bylaw says it shouldn't reduce, it, it won't reduce it more than seven hundred and fifty dollars in a given year. So we'd have to sort of figure out, like, you know, if they came in and they worked and a volunteer, what, what's the rate, you know, that, that comes, you know, for them to be working? I think that's the stuff all needs to be updated, because this was passed in the Springtown meeting of twenty-ten. A long time ago, but, you know, we, so that was before, I think you just got elected, you know, back then, that year, right, so, and you were here.
Yeah, I remember it.
Yeah. I think we need to, I think we need to kind of put together what, update what the program is, and what the offering is, and then just advertise it for people to, to apply for it. I think it's a good idea, you could use other hands on some things, I'm sure people have some skills. Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, again, picking on my demographic again, I do recall some years ago inquiring about that. And I believe the information I was given at the time is that the administrative aspect had not been worked out, in terms of, I guess the details weren't in place, it was a thought, but there wasn't any conclusion, if you will, to how this was going to be done. And I neglected to follow up any further, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it basically says that cities and towns have the power, shall have the power to create local rules and procedures for implementing the section in any way consistent with the intent of the section. That, that does need to be done based on this. We accepted the article for, the state article for Dudley.
Which allows, allows us to do it.
Which allows us to do this.
Right.
So I think we need to work up a...
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 go ahead.
As I read this, I see that there's a piece in here where it says the amount per hour cannot be less than minimum wage, seven fif, and it can't exceed seven fifty in a given year. What's minimum wage, fourteen-ish, somewhere in there, fourteen-ish? So say fif, fifteen dollars an hour, that, that's fifty hours. Fifty hours of work and seven hundred and fifty dollars of their tax bill disappears.
One hour a week.
I, I mean, yeah. I, I'd like it if we could get on this and...
Yeah.
It's updated.
Put this again on the agenda.
We need to get it updated. I know Mr. Johnson and Mr. Joseph might, might have some, some things they'd like to say. But I li, I love the idea of the program, we just need to like put our boundaries around it, like how many people, we obviously can't have everybody, I think Charlton did a few, and then they, they increased it over time, when they saw it was very popular, and they actually gained benefit, because the town does benefit by having people come in and work, right?
What constitutes work?
It needs to be defined, right?
Because there, there are some folks that are over the age of sixty that serve on unpaid, serve in unpaid positions already.
That's, I, I hear you.
Collected persons.
I could, I could...
Something different.
I'll be, I'll be there next month.
Yeah, yeah, you will. Yes, you will.
Hey, every penny helps.
I know, I know, especially these days. Any, any, any other discussion? Mr. Carmiarni?
I'm going to say elected positions different.
A volunteer, I think he meant like the volunteer.
Good evening. Quickly, I would imagine that the Senior Work Off Program has been updated, at least on the state level, in the last twelve years. My thoughts on this, you need to establish where the money is coming from, similar to an assessor's overlay. If we pay Mr. Zakowski seven hundred and fifty dollars for his fine efforts, that money needs to come from somewhere. So in the upcoming budget, that seven fifty times however many people we want to put in, needs to be allocated to the board.
It's an abatement, right, Rich?
It's, it's, it's a, it's, it's payroll check is what it is.
Reduction of the real property tax bill.
No.
Money needs to come from somewhere, so if you've raised ten million dollars in a levy, and you're offering seven hundred and fifty dollars somewhere to Mr. Zakowski on his property, you need to account for that. It's almost like an abatement. I, I won't bog down the conversation. One of, one of the concerns that I would, I, I would like to see is, right now, we go through and we give a thousand dollars elderly abatement, okay? We also have the ability to increase that, if that's something. We shuffle the numbers and we look and say, people would be greatly benefited by more than a thousand. It's my understanding, a thousand is what the state reimburses us for. There's also the flip side of the coin, someone who is over the age of sixty and meets all of the requirements and comes in. You have other people who may not be able to. Part of the law is, I may go in and do some work, obviously I can't, but someone similar to me, someone with an education, someone with a skill, someone... Someone with an education, someone with a skill, someone who is under the age of, may work for a relative or a friend to do part of the work-off. One of the considerations that I'd like to see brought forward is a need. You're, you could have some wonderful people over the age of sixty who are just brilliant. I don't wanna be crass and say that they don't need it, but I'd like to see that seven hundred and fifty go to the most deserving people. So I think there should be, uh, a needs or an eligibility criteria somewhere along the way, and the idea of the proxy work be investigated so that, um, odds are the person who really needs the money might not be able to show up or may not have a marketable skill. So I agree, there's, there's some need, uh, and we wanna, in my mind, um, hit the best recipients of that need.
I think that, that's a great point, part of the application process, I would imagine, Rich, right, Carrie?
So you're saying, Rich, we need to have like a revolving account called like elderly abatement count? And we fund it for, let's say we have ten people, seventy-five hundred bucks, we fund that, you pull it from there, bring it over to there?
I.
Or whoever.
I, I think, and we're not the first to do it, so we're lucky. I believe it's in the assessor's overlay, but it would be a noted increase, like you said, seven fifty for the ten, for the ten recipients. But it's real money at the end of the day. It's not, we just reduce the taxes, unless of course you wish to levy less than, so that you have the ability to, to equal out the equation.
The good news is there's no, in no instance shall the amount by which you're presuming, it goes on to say no wages, social security tax, no withholding, nothing.
So there is an advantage, and the, and the idea was, um, you could have somebody help in an annual election or a town meeting or something like that, so you could have some repetition and what have you. So, so yes.
Good, Steve.
So, Mr. Chair, I think treasurer collector hit the nail on the head, we, we need, I guess it's a two-part question, we need to find out if it's changed. And we need to find out if we accepted it before and it's changed, we fall into the previous provisions, since we've already accepted it, even though you haven't used it.
If we accepted those provisions, Mr. Chairman, it would, we would just have to follow the changes.
Yeah, so I guess we have to just investigate that.
That's how it usually works when you accept a state bylaw.
So we just have to, I think, find out if it's been updated or changed, and then bring it forward again at a later meeting with all the answers that were brought up tonight.
Yeah. Maybe we can propose a, a plan for this, along with what the current language is. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, we need to like, you know, this age, well, how many slots? I, I think people, they, it's limited, right, and then here, here are the qualifications to apply for it, and here's what we'd have people do.
You know, when Mr. Carmianni hit, sorry, hit the nail on the head, we already have it in Charlton, it'd be an easy phone call. Reach out to Charlton to see how they format, formatted it, how they set it up, and what they may have done for restrictions.
Maybe, uh, call Andrew, call us and see how they, uh, Charlton implemented it.
How they run it.
Save as.
Right.
We can kind of take some of the stuff from them.
Copy, paste, edit.
Have to recreate the wheel.
If it's successful as, um.
Yeah, Debbie says it was.
I mean, we have, we know someone that very versed with the Charlton people.
Sorry, Michelle.
Thank you, Richard. All right? Okay, all right, that was a good discussion, good, good first, uh, care I get that, so we'll get some more information on that coming up. All right, item three D under new business, board of selectmen vote to authorize debt exclusion votes, police cruiser, fire command vehicle, and brine machine. Mr. Ruda?
Mr. Chairman, this is something that's already been through the capital improvement committee, as you recall. It was approved by the town meeting voters to, to borrow for this, um, to borrow the money for a police cruiser, a, uh, fire command vehicle, and the highway brine system, which we've been talking about for almost two years now. Seems like it's been a while because we didn't have any November election, so it would have necessarily appeared on that, on last November's ballot. But there was nothing this year, so the town meeting authorized the borrowing. This would be a vote, as we've done in the past with the board of selectmen, to authorize it being the two ballot questions, freight debt exclusion to be placed on a, on the spring ballot, for a vote by the people, yes or no?
Steven?
So, Mr. Chair, before you call for a, a vote.
You wanna read?
I'm not, I just wanna make a, I just wanna reiterate what Mr. Ruda said, it followed our, these questions followed our town established procedure, went to capital improvement, went to town meeting, I believe it was vote, that town meeting was voted overwhelmingly. And obviously, one fifty would have been nice, I'm sure there wasn't one fifty then. So as, as a board, since I've been on the board, we've always allowed a valid question to go before the people because it'd be easy for us to make a decision, it impacts all the taxpayers in town.
That's right.
So if you can take more comments if you want, if there's any out there, but I'll gladly make a motion to put forward these two questions for the voters to decide.
Mr. Chairman, can I, if whoever makes the motion, can I just give them this, the? Actually, you have it up on the.
Yeah, he has it up.
So you'd move to, you'd move to allow the following two questions, and if you could please read question one and two, and write through, and provide it for the said questions, blah, blah, blah.
Any more comments before I do it?
Yeah, any more comments, Carrie, or anything?
No, this is the brine system.
Yeah, I mean, I said, things are.
We'll highly support it.
Yeah, like I said, everybody's already, well, town meeting already approved it, um, we always put these in front of the, the voters. People are pretty smart, they know that, you know, when we ask for something like that, we need it. The brine system is, we're trying to reduce our overall operating and, and material costs over time in, uh, for the roads. I think, uh, you know, it's time we, we did something like that.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chair, Jeff can speak on it, it helps bring us in compliance.
In compliance.
Less use of sand and, I forget what the form of, what you have to, you have to fill out every year. The stormwater management, uh, program that we have to adhere to, MS four. MS four, that's what I was thinking of. Ready?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sullivan?
Chairman, make a motion that we post as a ballot. Question one, shall the town be allowed to so-called debt exclude by exempting from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars and zero cents required to pay for bond issues in order to purchase one police cruiser, one fire command vehicle in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, one police cruiser in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, one police cruiser in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, related equipment and incidental costs and expenses related thereto approved by the October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one town meeting. Question two, highway brine system, shall the town of Dudley be allowed to so-called debt exclude by exempting from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars, zero cents required to pay for the bond issued in order to purchase a salt brine ice road treatment system for the highway department, related equipment and incidental costs and expenses related thereto approved by the October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one town meeting, and provide further that said questions shall be deemed approved if a majority of the persons shall vote yes at a duly posted meeting of the board of selectmen, March seventh, twenty-twenty-two. The board voted to approve the above debt exclusion questions for the insertion on the June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two town election ballot, I so move.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Second and by Mr. Siganovich, all right, some discussion, um, for the chair will go. Just so everybody remembers, the debt exclusion means, once we pay it off, it comes off the tax roll, so we can hopefully buy something else that we need, you know, based on need and process. And, um, I don't know if you read on the, heard Mr. Sullivan say that, that we're getting some police cruisers, one a year over the next several years, and something behind that, it's taking so long to order one now that this actually kind of is built in. So I think, Chief, when's the last time we ordered one, and you don't have it yet, do you?
We ordered one, uh, just after the fall town meeting, and it's due to be delivered, I think, in June or the beginning part of July. So if we order something now, probably by Thanksgiving, would come through. But the, the really purpose of this program was to, uh, just have that funding in place so that we would always order a vehicle come the fall, have it delivered, uh, probably by May or June, and paid for, then repeat the process over, and kind of bypasses everything there, uh, and, uh, just helps rotate these vehicles and get some, uh, good useful, good useful mileage and everything out of them, so, thank you.
Chief? Any other questions? Hey, caller Turbo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous, three zero. Guys, put that to the voters. All right, um, here we have adjournment, do we have any other reports from everybody, Mr. Ruda, or did we remove those?
Did I put them on the agenda, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, it's been a week since that last meeting, I didn't include it.
Oh, I understand, okay. Oh, I'll, I'll put it out there, any of the, any of the department heads have anything they wanna pressing? All right, all right.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by, to adjourn by Mr. Siganovich?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous, aye. Somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn on the planning board?
Uh, we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
A motion, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, good night.